Call to order and pledge allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now take the roll call. Peter O'Brien is present. Amy Fernandez.
Here.
Don Marie Autry.
I'm here.
Brian Devlin.
Present.
And Annie Olm.
Present.
Special presentations and/or announcements. This time, slottages were informational presentations. Appointments or awards to be presented by the Planning Commission or to the Planning Commission.
I did not have any opportunity.
All right. Four, appointment of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. The Planning Commission annually appoints within its members the Chair and Vice Chair of the Commission. The Chair leads the meetings and signs Commission-approved resolutions as the Vice Chair fills in for the Chair when they cannot attend. Commission action will be to appoint a member as Chair and a member as Vice Chair.
Does it have to change?
No.
Chairman, I'm sorry. I would like to nominate Peter O'Brien as our Chairman and Amy Fernandez as our Vice Chair.
I like the second.
Cindy gets to pick who gets to the second.
So Peter O'Brien remains as the Chairman. And Amy Fernandez is the Vice Chair.
And so just for posterity's sake, may they want to, all in favor, can vote out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comments. Public participation is welcomed and invited at all Planning Commission meetings regarding issues or matters not on the agenda but still within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission of Wairega. If your comments concern an item noted on the agenda, please address the Planning Commission when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the Planning Commission refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Planning Commissioners, when requested by, recognized by the Chair, may ask clarifying questions or present, but no action may be taken by the Planning Commission during the public comments section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the Planning Commission is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the Planning Commission on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing, old or new business sections of the agenda, please address the Commission when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the Commission as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become a public record. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Since the Planning Commission is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or be placed on a future agenda. Public comments period is not intended to be a question-and-answer period or conversations with the Planning Commission or city staff. Does anyone wish to address the Planning Commission? Apparently not. Consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the Planning Commission wishes to remove an item for discussion. Do I have to move on the minutes separately?
No, you can do it as the consent agenda.
All right. I move to recommend the Planning Commission action. I move to adopt the consent agenda of the Planning Commission of the city of Wairega as presented. Do I have a second?
A second.
And we will now take the votes. Commissioner Olm.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Devlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Autry.
Yea.
And Commissioner O'Brien votes aye too. Public hearing, no. All business, general plan 2044, draft vision statement and guiding principles. The Planning Commission will consider and discuss a presentation on the 2044 Visioning Public Engagement and input on a draft visioning statement and guiding principles for the general plan update. Recommended Planning Commission action, discussion and direction to staff on draft visioning statements and guiding principles.
Right, thank you. And just for a point of clarification in your agenda packets, we did have the meeting schedule and that did not get added to the consent agenda, so we'll put that on for the next meeting. But you have the meeting schedule as per our ordinance, just FYI for that one. So this item's returning for your consideration. So you'll remember in November, we went through a presentation of basically the materials that are now put into a draft form on page nine and 10 of your packet. It will be a little bit better formatted and prettier as we move through, but I want to make sure the content is the important part of this. And so as we discussed last time, we did have unanimous approval and support for the vision statement as presented. I want to make sure that that's something you still hold true and that can be found on page 10 just above the guiding principles header. And then we also developed guiding principles based on our discussion at the last meeting and from interpretation of the visioning statement. One of the things we wanted to call out is that we really leaned into your discussion on mental health services and healthcare options for the entire community and not just focusing those things on those who are unhoused. And so we tried to put in numbers one and seven of the guiding principles to really focus on creating a healthy community as we go forward, making sure that we are establishing Wairega as a center for physical, emotional, psychological, and social wellbeing through state-of-the-art facilities, programs to support resident health journeys, and through collaborations with other health-focused agencies and groups. One of the other concerns that Commissioner Devlin had brought forward, we have a guiding principle recommended. Ensure the city balances fiscal responsibility without limiting the opportunities of individuals and business success. And so again, trying to include flexibility within regulations as well as our financial policies moving forward. I do have to balance the fact that we don't want to necessarily give away too much, but again, we can put that into perspective. You'll see that is also integrated into the scenarios, which will be the next item as well as we put together the general plan document for you is that we're trying to keep that in perspective of making sure we don't limit the economic vitality and success of the community. We've also put in here about removing barriers to providing healthy, sustainable, and local food options through agriculture at the household level to large-scale facilities. So again, making sure that we have that supply chain as well as options throughout the community. One of the things, like I said, is we, in our survey, we asked individuals to define rural character. And a lot of that has to do with social connection, agriculture, and pieces like that. But it didn't necessarily bring up ranching or agriculture within the city that's large scale. And so we wanted to include some local food systems planning within this to allow continuation of community gardens, potentially future programming around households providing food for themselves. It is a huge concern, as we stated in some of our other documentation of our younger demographic. Food is a big focus for them and we do have a highly insecure populace in our school systems that do need a lot more food security assistance. And so we wanted to integrate that into our 20-year plan as trying to be able to make sure that doesn't continue to happen and we address that issue. We also have exploring and establishing identity, cultural heritage, and history of the city of Wairega involving the people ideologies and historical events and integrating those into design, community events, and programs. And so that kind of goes into some of the urban design pieces we've talked about in the past, doing our urban design workshop of taking some of our historic architecture and making sure that continues throughout future developments and making sure things are cohesive to those pieces as well as integrating potential public art pieces that look at the history of the community. Most of the public art pieces we've had requested since I've arrived here have been around showcasing the variety of history and cultures that are in this area. And then we're also recommending a guiding principle on creating flexibility in regulations and programs to allow individuals, businesses, and visitors to live and experience the city of Wairega in their unique ways. Again, trying to make sure we have those options and making sure we're accommodating those people. And finally, integrating a guiding principle on exceptional recreation opportunities for residents and visitors to experience the outdoors in a variety of ways and sustain healthy lifestyles. And so again, these guiding principles are part of our visioning statement in terms of this is how, these are the things we're really going to focus on to see the vision forward. These guiding principles can change throughout time and you'll see within each of the elements, like the housing element has its own guiding principles as well about providing a variety of housing types, which we saw echoed in our information that we had. You'll see again, a common theme is energy systems, energy independence. And so you'll see those guiding principles within the conservation element that marry these as well as work to energy independence as we move forward with the general plan and process. So we just wanted to make sure that you have an opportunity to review these, that you're comfortable with them. And then if the Planning Commission is satisfied with the vision statement and guiding principles, we will then schedule it for city council review and approval. And so once you guys are comfortable with this, we'll move it on to the next step. If there's any major changes to this, we'll communicate that back to you if it happens at the city council level. And so this is your open field. There's no state mandate around this. So you're open to interpret this or add or subtract anything you would like.
I think we had a really good conversation at the last meeting, correct, about this?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And so what we can do at this point is we can approve it and have it moved to the city council's agenda for approval. So would that be a sufficient motion?
Yes, I would recommend opening it up for public comment if a member of the public would like to or if you have any other edits or changes that you would like to see.
Anyone wish to address the Commission? No? All right. So a motion is to...
Approve the...
Approve the general plan.
The general plan as presented.
The guiding principles.
So vision and guiding principles.
Yes. Okay, sorry. Let me just make sure I'm reading it correctly. So I would like to make a motion to approve the vision and guiding principles as presented and... That's it?
Do you just, period?
Period, okay.
Is that all we need or do we all have to vote?
Well, it would be nice to have a vote on record.
It would.
And it would.
I second. Ms. Fernandez is... Do I have a vote?
Yes, I vote aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
The ayes have it.
All right, thank you. So again, I want to make sure during this process we're taking our time. If you guys want to upload the presentation, please. I want to make sure you have enough time to review these things. This is a very important piece of what we're doing. And so the next one is very fun. I'm very excited. We had to talk about land use. You're good. All right. So if you'd like, for lovely individuals who came a little bit later, we do have copy of the slides also in a paper format for you if you'd like. And so this is a really big item that I wanted to present to you again. It's going to be in two pieces. So today, we're going to talk about scenario planning and a lot of this is going to feed into one of the largest elements and I think one of the more can be controversial elements of the general plan, which is the land use element, which influences our zoning code as well as a lot of our regulations that we move through. And so this will be kind of a big thing. I want to take time with you all to go over your options. And so we're going to be using a scenario planning kind of framework. If you could please progress the slides to slide two. So we'll see here, scenario planning is a decision-making framework where we look at a variety of different possibilities that can occur and we weigh them against each other based on criteria that you get to determine as important. We developed the criteria out of your visioning statement and guiding principles and those are open for comment or adjustment as you see fit. And really what we want to do is we want to show you options for land development patterns and look at the positives or negatives based off of those criteria in your visioning statement. And so on slide three, we'll see that land use. I want to make sure everybody's on the same page as what land use is. It's the management of land resources, facilities, and services for the welfare of the community, furthering the future of the community. And there are four major different types of land use that we look at, although these are not all encompassing. Most of the land uses that we see in planning fall within the four categories and you can click through this slide. So we have residential, as we all know, so that can include your high to low as well as residential agriculture. You can just keep clicking through this one. The next one is commercial, which is retail and some of your other items, tourism, agriculture, and finally, industrial. And so these are the four major areas. These are also statutory requirements in California that you have to have at least one of these. You have to have residential, commercial, and agriculture land use types within your land use designation. You currently have all of them. So I think we'll just adjust some of that to this process and potentially either add or subtract land use designations out of these four categories. So some of the things that we'll talk about in the land use settlement as we move forward is like residential agriculture. How is that going to morph into, you know, potentially new zones or keeping that zone? What goes into that? And so each of these will have definitions of those. And then for agriculture, you also have your natural resources and your open space, which is your parks, natural areas. Ranching will go in there. And on slide four, land use and development scenarios, if you'd like to click. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're going to move that caption around quite a bit. So what we're doing today with the land use and development scenarios is we're highlighting preferred and achievable outcomes for the city in 2044. Again, if you want to look into a development pattern that I do not have highlighted for you, we can analyze that for the likelihood of that happening. This is what we would call normative scenario planning of what are potential outcomes you would like to see. We're going to bring awareness on the potential positive and negatives as I said earlier on these different land use patterns because there are positives and negatives to every single one of these and understanding your priority growth areas where you'd like to increase or maintain density of different types of uses and then where are those types of uses appropriate within the city. And so what we've done is we've developed what we call factors of importance that we're going to use as the criteria. So if you'd like to click onto the next slide, I don't think I have animation on the rest of these Cindy's, so I'll give you a little bit of a break. And so again, these are going to create the metrics that we're going to use to inform you on, here are the gives and takes of if we go this direction, here's what potentially could happen. And so we've developed these different pieces. So we have resilient, resiliency, opportunity, safety, promotion of a healthy community, social connection, economic vitality. And we have two at the end that I'll talk about during our assumptions, which is population increase and need for annexation. And so we'll go into these very briefly if you'd like to click to the next slide, please. So we have resilient as the first one, which is basically what is the ability to adapt or respond to a changing economy, housing market, community needs, and outside influences? This does look at hazard mitigation and disaster preparedness as well. And so how are our regulations? Are they flexible and easy to use? Are they able to respond to some of these pieces quickly? COVID was a great illustration for the planning community on how land use did not necessarily respond as well, having some of these new housing types, people moving in with their parents to care for them. You know, we want to make sure when we're building this 20-year plan that we can kind of try to anticipate some of those changes in an appropriate way. And then sensitive land uses are kept out of hazard areas, making sure that we don't put housing in a flood zone. You would think that that would be intuitive, but not so much. And making sure that these neighborhoods are planned in an appropriate way, that they have evacuation routes. And so that is a state mandated area, but also a very good thing to have. So measuring opportunity, we're looking at the number of options provided in each land use category. Some of the input that we've received from property owners, developers, and just general members of the public is that we do not have a very flexible zoning code. We actually have a very prohibitive zoning code and so that all comes out of your land use element. If you make it flexible and give people a number of options to choose from, as long as they're appropriate, it's going to give people better opportunity to utilize their land. And what you'll see with all these factors of importance is they do work together and there may be some repetitiveness in how we're going to measure the success of each scenario. But that's a good thing that you have overlapping pieces that are important. So what is the ability to use each of these different uses? Do people have to go through a discretionary process for what they want to do? Which is basically, do they have to come to Planning Commission and get a CUP if they want to do it? Is it a use by right? Do they have to rezone frequently? You know, we want to make sure that it's as easy to do as possible and again, where appropriate. Conditional use permits serve purposes that are important. Again, making sure there may be a use that does need some oversight, but making sure that that list is kept as low as possible and making sure that we meet those types of intents for the land use policy. We're also looking at the ease of information and different uses that are not accounted for. The example I used earlier when we were going over a review is planning did not know what to do with data centers. You know, that was not a land use that we thought we would have to accommodate. And so there are things that are going to come up in the next 20 years that even we cannot anticipate. Indoor agriculture is becoming more popular within cities. Even more rural cities are looking at indoor ag. And so we don't really have a way to deal with that right now in our current general plan because it is kind of industrial, but it is also agriculture. And so when we're going through and developing the different land use designations, we want to make sure that we try to give options for things that we don't even know about. The other example I have is I started in Mount Chastain. I had a gentleman ask me if he could do a cricket farm in his house because he farms crickets to make into cricket flour and sells it as a gluten-free, high-protein alternative in the Bay Area. And I had no idea how to answer that question if that is a home-based business or not because I would have never thought of raising crickets in my house for food. And so trying to account for those and be as flexible as possible to respond to those things because again, it happens.
So many questions.
So many. It's not nearly as fun as the mini sheet.
I'm just thinking of infestation.
Yeah. Not as noisy as you think it'd be. But anyway, so trying to give those opportunities to people to be creative, do something a little bit different. But again, when appropriate. Don't put your crickets outside. They are, they can be a little noisy, but not terrible when they're in a garage. Access to a variety of business types. So again, you'll see this in another one of the factors of importance, which is allowing people to do home-based businesses, allowing those businesses to grow into small-scale commercial and growing into large-scale commercial if they so choose and trying to make sure we have opportunity for that type of growth within the community as well as opportunity for other business types to come in. One of the things that has not been made very clear yet in the community is your balance of local versus national versus regional chain type of retailers, food establishments. There hasn't been like a clear indication of that. So as we go through this process, we'll want to know where you find those types of businesses more appropriate than not. Do you not care? Some communities are very particular about it where they don't want any national chains in the downtown, but they're okay with it in other sectors. So that's kind of all part of how do we look at opportunity with land use? Next slide, please. So safety is another big one. There are a lot of metrics around safety, so we can add to this, we can subtract to it. These are definitely playable for you guys if you want to look at that. What is the overall cost to provide safety services? Again, some of these scenarios expand our spatial footprint. When you expand your spatial footprint, you're going to need more police, you're going to need more fire, you're going to need more medical staff. As the population grows, depending on where that growth is focused, you may see an increase in the cost of providing those services or you could see a decrease in the cost of providing those services, you know, as you do a little bit more infill. And so we want to look at what is the land use pattern for that? Reduced response times. We want to make sure people can respond and then they're responding in a very quick way. And some of these may increase those times. Again, it's not saying that those scenarios are bad, but it's again, you have a trade-off when you're making these choices and these are the things we want to look at. Ability to provide a safe-built environment. So there's a complete streets mandate within the state of California, but that does fit into safety. It's making sure that there's adequate space for all transportation types basically on our major thoroughfares as well as some of our more minor ones. Visibility of users on the street and within public areas. How you plan out land uses can help with those types of aspects. Again, making sure that this will kind of trickle down into the zoning code a little bit more with where you put buildings, where are your lines of sight? You know, how do users feel in that position? Lighting cost and efficiency, you know, as you spatially, again, expand, nothing is wrong with that, but that will increase your costs for lighting.[1589.67] It will increase some of our efficiencies as we go through and do that. And then where are people congregating? And it doesn't necessarily mean the hill in our unhoused population, but it can also be the county courthouse, which again, could be protested. And so you want to think about what are the other land uses around that? What if there's a very controversial case that occurs? So the congregation of people in appropriate areas, making sure that there is a civic kind of plaza. That's why a lot of those types of buildings do have those larger plaza areas, because they anticipate that could happen sometime in the future. So the next one is also another really big one with lots of metrics, which is the promotion of a healthy community. So we want to look at land uses that lead to a cleaner air quality or do not degrade the air quality any further. We do have very good air quality here. We do want to look at the reduction in noise levels to healthy benchmarks. You don't want complete silence, because noise does mean people are moving in your city and they're alive, which is a good thing. And again, going back to covid and having people nod on the street and how quiet it is, it can get very eerie. So we want to make sure there's appropriate noise levels. Open space within a quarter mile of all households. And so the quarter mile is a metric that we use within the planning profession, because it's a reasonable distance people can walk to open space like a park or it's a reasonable distance for a five year old to walk is really actually how they plan that out. And they did actually make children walk with their parents and they timed it out. There's a whole study on it, if you're really interested in the quarter mile stuff. And so open space, making sure that's available for people. And it doesn't necessarily mean a large park like, you know, Green Horn Reservoir, but it could be, you know, something smaller, like a community garden or a parklet or things like that as we go through. The access and ease of use and safe active modes of travel. Again, we do have a lot of data around this. The more you walk, the better off your health outcomes are, the less likely you are to get hurt. Walking is one of the safest activities you can do in terms of physical fitness. Access to a number of healthy food options, as we said before, making sure people have the ability to grow their own food, the ability to have access to fresh produce. This is a concern. Like I said before, the younger demographic is very conscious about healthy food choices and having that availability and having it being affordable. Access to a variety of mental health and healthcare options, making sure that the hospital is not the only focus area of the city where we put those allowable land uses, but allowing private practices to be in other areas, allowing, you know, some of these to be a little bit closer. I think we could probably also put in daycare facilities and youth facilities as well into this as as part of a measure. And then developing and maintaining healthy drinking water and effective sanitary systems as you again spatially grow. That's going to be much more costly to you, which you'll see in another metric here. So the next slide, please. Social connection is a really fun one for developing metrics. So it's very similar to the last one. So you want spaces within a quarter mile of households that hold community or special events. And that can be again, as small as a birthday party in a park or having some kind of fun center within a quarter mile. It's just really looking at those types of land uses that facilitate community gathering. And so access and facility, access to businesses and facilities that promote community, health and fitness centers, food establishments, gathering places, spiritual centers, community centers. And then development that allows neighborhood exchange. So making sure our land use types don't have regulations that don't allow you to have little libraries or don't allow you to have parklets, community gardens, allowing for some flexibility of those uses within your neighborhood that aren't necessarily commercial or something that you would drive to, but something that you collectively, you know, buy into.
Can you define parklets and libraries?
Yeah. So parklets are, if you, if you're familiar with, basically what they do is it's kind of like an on street. It can be adapted to a lot of restaurants. The restaurants in Mount Shasta have what are called parklets and it's outdoor seating for restaurants. But you can also do parklets in terms of like a small park that's basically built into the infrastructure and just using a small space. As opposed to thinking of a park being this massive quarter acre, you could just have a park bench and some butterfly gardens. And then a little library is basically a small structure that people can put up in front of their yards where you can put books that you can then exchange within your neighbors. And it's very popular for kind of some community stuff. You've seen other people do, instead of the little libraries, they'll do anything from like outdoor equipment as well, like small scale like frisbees, basketballs. That's a version of it that it's kind of expanded to include like just little things throughout the community. And then if you, the neighbor who have it, basically maintain it. And allowing people to do that in some communities, they actually outlaw them. And it's very fascinating if you want to get into little library stuff. There was a big thing in Minneapolis, Minnesota about those, where a community basically put a voter ballot initiative together to outlaw them in their neighborhood, because they just didn't like them. But again, we do find a lot of research around that. These types of small things are really what build social connection within your community. It can also be, they also have boxes for produce sharing. So if you do grow like 20 pounds of tomatoes and you're not into that, they do also have small produce libraries as well, where you can give whatever you have left over for that. There are a little bit of nuances around the food based ones, obviously for nuisance, making sure that you're not promoting any type of animals or people who may be abusing that system. And so there's a little bit around that, but the little libraries are very popular. But again, it's, it's the, it's the factors that make you connect with your community. And it's the factors that make you feel like you belong in that community. And it's sometimes it's the littlest things that make you feel special. Social connection can also be public art pieces or interactive art pieces. You know, we can kind of expand on that. So next slide, please. So economic vitality is the, is the last important factor that we have here, besides the other two I'll go over in a little bit. But looking at this one is again, flexibility of land use types throughout the city, not necessarily confining business types to one specific area, forcing people to only go to South Wyrica or, you know, downtown, but having maybe some of these businesses parceled out throughout the community. Economic vitality can also be again, allowing some small scale businesses within a neighborhood. One of the more interesting ones, if you want to look at an example of this, is there is a Japanese spa in the middle of an Ashland neighborhood on the edge of a park. And you would never think it was a commercial business. It's very small, it's well kept. If you're interested in looking at that, I can recommend that to you. I found it the other day and it's delightful.
Is that chosen?
Yeah. It's really nice, actually. Yeah. Anyway, but it's just an example of how integrating smaller scale or very what we call non impactful businesses into some of the neighborhoods can actually lead to more people traversing the neighborhood, which leads to safety. It also just kind of enhances that neighborhood as a whole and makes it a little bit nicer to live in, to have that within walking distance of your house. And then doing those types of things. So ease and access to home based businesses, as I said before, that's a really important thing for small towns, because a lot of people start small. It makes sure that we have that ability to trial things before we go out and do them. We see a lot of people with home based businesses in the city of Wyrica particularly. In my experience, there's, there's quite a few. Safe and reliable streets. Again, for economic vitality, you want to be able to move people and goods, as we spoke about before with the highway three, having the potholes. We want to make sure as we support growth and land use development types, that we have that infrastructure sized correctly. And so when we focus some of these uses in a certain area, we want to make sure that that infrastructure is is up to par. And then again, cost of effective infrastructure maintenance. So we did just have a Prop 218 process for water and sewer rates. As you increase infill versus spatial, there is a trade off of cost effectiveness of infrastructure. Because as you sprawl out into other areas that are not developed, we also have to bring the infrastructure for that or rethink how we're doing infrastructure. And so again, if you would like to do that, there is nothing wrong with it intrinsically. There are just pros and cons to that that we have. And so supporting appropriate growth, making sure that economic vitality, we're not subjecting everyone to one specific area of town where they have to drive for every single good. That adds to a lot of transportation cost within the city itself. So making sure that growth is spatially appropriate. And then maximizing property values with economic opportunities and uses. That's not just flexible uses for your property, but making sure that if your neighbor develops your, the property, it's not negatively impacting you as well. Making sure we have those appropriate uses for for economic vitality. So these are some of the factors that we're considering. Moving forward and we can come back and talk about these. Again, you have these in your slides. If there's something you want to talk about between now and the next meeting, we're happy to do that, because what we plan to do in the next meeting is build this very big matrix, which is currently on my whiteboard and looks like an insane person. But and basically go, okay, is this going to be a positive or negative? You know, do we see this, this land use pattern, you know, being economically vital for the community? And so there are nuances to each one of these things. And so it's not saying that we can't get all of these things in one. And then we're going to go into the scenarios now. So these are just basic ideas of potential development patterns based off of input we've gotten in workshops as well as public input we've heard within a lot of the surveying and and workshopping. And so these can change. They also don't need to be exclusive. And so you can combine some of these. You can also take a look at, you know, some other pattern that I did not present to you today. It's just kind of giving you a very generalized, this is kind of what we've heard. And so we're always going to have a scenario one, which is a no change baseline. Again, there are some assumptions around that, but that just kind of shows what's happening currently. Again, each one of these scenarios will meet state mandates, so there will be some change if you decide to not change. And that is okay. We also use this no change baseline for the environmental review. And so going through these, we'll go to the next slide. We do have some assumptions that I need to get out of the way and we can change some of the assumptions, but I would like to know sooner rather than later if I am correct or wrong. So first off, we are planning for growth. We, we got direction from the Planning Commission as part of the housing element that growth is positive and we want that. The city council also confirmed that at the time of the housing element. This is a very important piece for me, because if we're not planning to grow, there's nothing wrong with that. But that does change how we approach some of these scenarios and it changes how we approach the general plan as a whole, because we then go into maintaining and improving the current quality of life for current residents. We do not plan for growth. And there are different factors that go into my brain and compute out, and then we go through that. And so when we're going through these scenario rankings, we find that increasing population is a good thing. That is the current assumption that we have. If that assumption has changed, please let me know during this meeting and we can have a conversation about it. But this is the direction I have gotten. I need this direction to be solidified, because if this changes halfway through the process, it changes the entire document. Which I can do, but it's a lot of time and money and energy and I would not like to. And so we're assuming over 20 years that we're shooting for about a 15,000 person population. And so in the eight year planning cycle for the housing element, we talked about getting to 10,000 people. And so over a 20 year span, we're looking at 15,000 with these assumptions. This assumption will become important as we get through some of the scenarios. And our water rights are kind of capped at around 15,000 people. And so that's why we're kind of looking at that number. There's a couple of other constraints to that. Like I said, the water rights piece is a big portion of that.
Yeah.
Again, if you want to go bigger than that, that is fine. We can go bigger, we can go smaller.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What is our population?
About, you know, depending on the reporting, it's around 72 to 7,600, depending on which reporting we look at.
And that's been pretty sustainable.
That's correct. Yes.
So that's a pretty significant jump.
Yes. Yes.
Double.
Yes, you would double in 20 years. Again, if that is what you want, that is what we shoot for.
I think that growth is, can be important. I would be, it's just double. That's the wild beat, but I'm, I'm there for it.
Yeah, and, and I mean, again, with city planning, one of the things you have to look at is why haven't you grown over time? One of the pieces is we just haven't seen development. We haven't, you know, stimulated that in a productive fashion in the past. Just passing the housing element alone, we have a number of housing developers interested in coming up here now. I mean, to just see political will change alone is a really big motivator for people who want to invest their money here. I think one of the things that you need to account for too is that we're now entering into a period of time in the United States, generally California more than others, where resources are coming, becoming very scarce. You know, it's becoming hotter in, you know, the southern part of California and it's going to become unlivable for a lot of people. And it's, you know, I think people will be pressuring to come up here, which is why you're seeing a vacancy rate of your housing units sitting at around 3%. We usually, like I said, in the housing element, we want to shoot for about 10 to 15. That's kind of healthier for us. But you're seeing that the housing stock is just not keeping up with the number of people who would like to move here and live here. And then you look at the number of people who commute into the city who don't live here. I mean, we average about 22 to 2300 people a day who commute into the city to work here. And why are they commuting to the city? You know, it could be because they prefer where they live, but I think a lot of it is you just, you can't find a lot of reasonably priced housing to be able to live here in my experience.
I'd like to chime in on this as well. So yeah, it's a speculation. I mean, I think the city council had been pretty adamant, they wanted to see some level of growth over the next 10 years. And they, they thought, I think, 10,000, but 15 is right in line with the water permit. And I just want you to think about the pressures in the state of California. And it wasn't that long ago that some people grew up in the state of California. There were 10 million people in the state of California, right? We have pictures of the overhead shots of the early 60s of this community, when there was really no state water project going down to Southern California at that point in the mid 50s. There was no freeway in Wyrica. So the state has changed drastically. And so to speculate on the cost to still live in the state of California, but live in Siskiyou County, I think we become very appealing. But I think that we will see a level of growth in Wyrica with Siskiyou County residents, if that makes sense. People are getting priced out of McLeod, they're getting priced out of Mount Shasta and the surrounding area. And a lot of them work for the government agencies in our community. And we can anticipate if we create housing stock, that those would be the first people that move here. We can sustain a, really a blue collar feel to this community as the county seat, without seeing the influences that I think will inevitably change the landscape in the city of Mount Shasta, quite frankly. So I just wanted to chime in, thank you.
Yes. And, and to put it in perspective, I don't know if anyone's read the news today or yesterday about the California Forever Development, if you're familiar with that at all. It is a private development that has bought up a significant part of Solano County to build a brand new city. They're investing their own private dollars to do that and they're aiming for 50,000 people within the next five years. So again, if that is what you want, that is what we aim for. And, and this is a 20 year document. To think in 20 years, 15,000, it, it's very achievable to do that. One of the other assumptions I did not put on here is we will be assuming still about 2.5 people per household. Wyrica's actually stayed pretty consistent with that number with the, the national average going down, as well as the state, I believe the state's going up a little bit, actually. And so that'll influence some of these scenarios that are more land use based with like household size. But it's doable. I wouldn't propose it if it wasn't. I, I mean, if you came in and you said, no, we want to shoot for 40,000 in 20 years, I, I'd probably tell you that might be unrealistic. If you want to set that goal, we can aim for it, but I will probably not achieve that. But I think 15,000 is realistic for this community. I think there is available land that is, is affordable in comparison to other areas. I understand that maybe certain people who currently live here, who see prices rising, may not think it's affordable. But in comparison to other parts of the United States or even our own state, it's incredibly affordable. Same thing for the fees and the cost of utilities. I understand that people here feel that hurt. I understand that we have a lower median income or fixed income individuals. But in the grand scheme of it, it's, it's very, very affordable for the rest of California. We deal with a number of speculators and commenters who are like, that's it. And I said, yep, that's it. And we're, we're quite affordable for that. You know, and again, we go back to the housing element and why we need to keep goals and programs going in there to support all levels of housing developers. Again, assisting our local to compete with some of these outside agencies. But you're going to see a lot of outside influence for, for development in the future. I mean, the grants alone coming out for low and moderate income housing, I think will also lead to a lot more housing within the city of Wyrica too, so.
So what would happen if the population reached 15,000? And you have the potential for more growth, but your water is tapped out at 15,000? How do you address that?
Yeah, there's a couple of ways you can dress that. And we do think about that, by the way. That comes up quite often internally. Water security is something that Jason has identified for us internally as staff as a goal. So there's a couple of different options. One, we tap into other water sources that we have water rights to, which we don't currently utilize. For example, we are applying for a grant to bring Green Horn Reservoir back online as an emergency water source. So similar to the boil water that we almost did for the Fall Creek line, bringing Green Horn on in case something else happened with that. It's looking at potentially purchasing other water rights would be an option. The other one is also petitioning the state of California to increase the amount of consumption on our water permit. So as we approach that, again, as we go through the general plan, there will be, you know, updates throughout the years. Hopefully we don't do this every 20 years. Hopefully we achieve our programs and goals and then we can come back and go, yeah, we need to adjust this now. And as we approach that, there will be a tipping point and there will be a program in the conservation element where it goes, okay, when we hit this population marker, this is when we really need to start investing money into that aspect. But there are ways to do it. It will be costly to go past 15,000.
We have no interest in it, just so you know. So ultimately, that's not the direction. I don't think anyone in this community wants to see us go over 15,000 is probably questionable for some people in the community. So just so people understand, that's not our intention. I think Juliana's asked, she's answering hypothetical questions. It'll be very difficult ultimately with the state of California to gain more water rights. So anybody that's concerned about water should want some level of growth to secure those water rights. And anyone's that's concerned about too much growth should be happy that the state of California would not allow us to grow, because we don't have the water hypothetically. So 15 is really a, a goal that's, you know, idealistic. I think that ultimately that's what we're shooting for, but I think 10 is very reasonable, so.
Yeah. And I think the, just to kind of put it out there, my job is to make things happen that you want to happen. So if this is what you want to do, that's what we go and do. Like I said, the reason why we're doing this exercise is I want to be able to be transparent of the positives and negatives of that choice. But ultimately, if that is the direction you want to go, that is the direction that we go and we make that happen. Finally, annexation in any scenario is deemed negative due to high cost and long timeframe for annexing land into the city. We're dealing with that with a private individual right now. So for the city to annex and bring in property on its own dime and own process would be costly. So we have considered it a negative aspect of this. Now, if you do want to expand and you do find annexation is not a negative thing, we can change that in the matrix. But that's what we're assuming as we go into this upfront. All scenarios assume state mandates are being met. So again, we're not going to present you a scenario that would not hold up in court or would get anyone in trouble with any of the enforcement agencies. And scenario one, no change assumes no population growth. So you'll see that scenario gets negative in the population increase metric. And those are the two metrics that we brought in here was that annexation of population. We do have historic averages, as you said before, from the department. Um, we do have historic averages, as you said before, from the Department of Finance that says you aren't going to grow. But I think that is influenced by other factors as opposed to people actually wanting to live here. Finally, scenario three, suburban minimal development assumes the smallest lot outside of high-density residential is going to be about ten thousand square feet. Um, that's a pretty small typical, what we would consider suburban in the planning field. So, when we go to scenario three, that's when we need to know about the population, because if we're assuming that we want to do that style of a land use pattern, we need to really understand how much additional land you will need to add to the city. Um, that scenario will probably lead to some of the largest annexations into the city, which again, just a trade-off. It's not necessarily inherently bad. Um, but that's just, we want to be transparent with what that's going to be realistic. So, we'll go to scenario number two. Like I said, one is no change. And so these are not parcel exact, it just kind of gives you an idea of what, uh, we're looking at. And so we would prioritize no increase or minimal increase into the city boundaries for an infill type of situation. We would focus density and a variety of uses along Main Street between the South Wyreka and North Wyreka exits. Um, upzoning in existing residential areas, mainly upzoning our high-density residential and medium dens- density residential. And so what this is looking at is our redevelopment sites, like the Shopko facility, filling empty and vacant, uh, commercial buildings, redeveloping buildings that are closer to the Main Street area, um, that, you know, could actually become higher density with a lot of ease. It's using existing infrastructure, it's, uh, using existing transportation routes. There are a couple of, uh, vacant properties throughout this area that we've included that are in, uh, near the hospital in the existing neighborhoods. Um, we would go ahead and upzone those slightly, but again, we would keep that community character and really leave most of the rest of the city untouched in terms of development pattern. And so scenario number one is going to look at this piece. It's not really, like I said, looking at expanding the spatial footprint of the city, but utilizing and focusing on those infill lots. And as I said before, these are just specific scenarios to look at the pros and cons. You can combine some of these. Um, you can change the boundaries of what we're, uh, focusing on ultimately in the land use element. But how this would translate is that you would see higher density, more variety of mixed-use development near the Main Street. And then it would basically lessen as it it goes out into the more peripheral areas of the city. Um, we would expect some changes in the low-density residential only to meet state minimum, uh, mandates. So, scenario number three would be your suburban minimal. And so again, this looks like a very large map, but these are eligible areas of the land use pattern. So, again, what we're doing is we're taking a traditional suburban development style similar to the Discovery Park, uh, Northview Drive, uh, some of the Campbell Track area, and then we're basically expanding on that into some of the more, uh, vacant areas. We're not really focusing on infill as much. So, again, we're assuming a ten thousand square foot minimum lot when able. One of the things to note about these scenarios is it doesn't necessarily mean all of this area within the highlighted area is developable, because we do have topography changes like Butcher Hill. We do have sensitive, uh, species like Wyreka flocks, and those will be avoided. But it's just showing you, when we go through the next twenty years, we would focus on development, expanding out and replicating kind of that single-family neighborhood style. And so the housing types would be very limited. So, this would be your most limiting variety of housing types in the low-density and medium-density residential. Um, so these would be single unit as well as duplex. Again, there are other laws in place, so we would still allow the accessory dwelling units. Um, those pieces would still be accounted for in this, but we would really focus on replicating that traditional style of development. Some people have said that they do really like this style in the public input, which is why I've included this scenario. Um, again, none of these are inherently bad, none of these are inherently good. Just telling you what the pros and cons of each one as we go through the maintenance of what you'd be going for. Mainly, we would just be upzoning the high-density residential, which there are some state mandates around, uh, that density increasing. So, right now, we're sitting at a twelve-unit per acre. Um, I have to look up what the state is now requiring us to increase that too, but it would be confined to the existing high-density areas. So, scenario number four is what we call node or a split center, which is a little bit more fun. Uh, and so this is a spread-out kind of density and variety piece. And so what this is, is basically creating new city centers and new neighborhoods throughout the community, really focusing on some of these other aspects, and some of this is annexation, some of this is not. One of the things you'll notice with the split center node is the inclusion of Hawkinsville. Um, we anticipate realistically, you will have to annex Hawkinsville at some point due to water resources. Um, South Wyreka as well, uh, would also potentially be eligible in the next twenty years. So, I'm I'm putting that out there. It's not going to happen in the next year, it's not going to happen probably in the next five. But, uh, a lot of the state mandates around water resources is requiring municipalities to annex smaller water purveyors. And again, it's more of a drought concern. Um, and so they are giving incentives for that, as well as potentially moving into an enforcement piece of making those districts to become part of our water system. So, that is why I've included a a node in the Hawkinsville area. Um, the Southern Wyreka node should probably be expanded to the other side of I five, uh, to include that as well. So, what this does, as well as it maintains your current density is and maintains your current development pattern, and really just starts to add new housing and more density into some of these undeveloped areas. And so you maintain some of the existing, you basically would maintain the existing character of your neighborhoods, and you would focus on and build out. And so each of these nodes would be what we call a neighborhood unit, and so they would include uses such as residential, commercial, food establishments in those areas, not to necessarily replace your downtown, but to operate as like a separate downtown. Um, so like I said, kind of like a specific neighborhood style. And so for the Philippi area node, you would kind of look at more of like a workforce housing. Um, it's very close to some of the more industrial uses. Um, and it would kind of focus on those types of nodes. So, you could even theoretically have a theme for each one of these and and make them their own unique additions to the city of Wyreka. So, scenario number five is is kind of the final one that we have a map for, which would be a corridor loop. So, this is your transportation-focused scenario. And so this would look at focusing development along your existing transportation routes. It would increase density and add mixed uses to all of these along the transportation route. And then the existing transportation routes would most likely need to be upgraded as part of this development scheme. Um, but again, it would be focusing a lot of that all along that corridor and really focusing on that transportation aspect. And finally, the last one is an environmental focus. It's not necessarily spatially, um, illustrative, but it's looking at land use from a solely environmental and public health lens. Um, this is a combination of upzoning and planned retreat, which planned retreat is basically the practice of removing uses from certain areas. And so this is very popular in more drought, or not drought, but flood-prone areas, of basically having city programs and policies around purchasing homes that are in, uh, homes and businesses that are in floodplains, either moving them out or basically exchanging them for a house that is outside of the floodplain and demolishing that house, um, if you don't move it. Um, basically, what it is, is restoring those areas to be operated as a floodplain zone. Um, again, this is added for kind of just a balance of development. Um, and just looking at that, you also have naturally occurring asbestos in this area, and we should probably avoid developing on that. Or if we do, there's a lot of specialty things there. And then maintain, uh, maintenance of existing densities where appropriate, looking at your hazard maps and moving those around, buffering creeks and waterways and environmentally sensitive areas from heavy development. Um, I did not put any development because there are some low, um, impact developments, like a single-family home or some small-scale, um, types of offices that can be complementary to these, but they would be subject to additional regulation. Um, again, maintaining these. And then finally, noise and air pollutant sources would have a five-hundred-foot buffer, um, no sensitive uses like housing, daycare, schools, um, hospitals. Um, and so that would go into play with the environmental focus. And so that would be basically moving a lot of uses within the city of Wyreka away from the highway, promoting that development away. Um, there are programs around that. They can be very costly, but it it's doable. And so that scenario has been brought in. So, this is basically now just opened up for you for discussion. Um, just, you know, talking about whatever you would like on this. Too many scenarios, not enough scenarios are the factors of importance close to what you would like to look for in the land development. And then, um, just go ahead.
Well, my questions would be, so the upzoning, you're talking largely about, uh, density of residential. Uh, does that include looking at changing the zoning in some of the, you know, there's some CH industrial, there's some areas where it'd be nice to, it'd be a good option for developers to be able to do something more than a CH zone when you're not on a highway. But is that something that's part of this?
Yep. Yeah, commercial, in in my experience, commercial tends to be the less controversial of the land uses in terms of kind of changing those up. People usually tune into the residential in my experience, and so they care more about that. But yes, so in all of the scenarios, we would be looking at applying all of those factors. So, making sure there's flexibility in every single scenario that we do. So, those will hold true throughout the whole thing. Um, so again, commercial areas, I think for commercial, where we would see some variety in the different uses is again, our priority areas or preferred areas. Um, but yes, the whole zoning code will get overhauled to look at those factors of importance. Yep.
So, in the five scenarios, is the city going to plump for one of them? Or are we going to have a mixture?
Up to you. What would you like? That is your purview as a planning commission and then city council as a whole. So, again, you know, it can be a combination of all of them. It can be a, we like the, a prioritization and say, we want to focus on infill first and then go for these other ones. Um, you could say we absolutely do do not like one of these scenarios. You do have to keep one in six.
How many, so how many additional units are going to be required to get to fifteen thousand population?
So, again, it will.
I mean, based on your two and a half.
Yes. I mean, I can do that math for you.
And is the fifteen thousand really comfortable? When that is what our our water is is set for, is that, is that really something that we should strive for? Or should we be a little more conservative and say twelve thousand?
Well, Jason didn't mention ten thousand.
He did mention ten thousand. So, I'm just wondering, was that fifteen thousand put in simply because you've been told that we like growth? And that's the maximum we can grow to, or?
So, it's a cou- it's a couple of different factors. One, the ten thousand discussion happened during the timeframe of the housing element, which is an eight-year timeframe. So, assuming that we'll have to do another housing element and assuming continued growth, that would be, you know, another about three thousand. I mean, so you could put us at about thirteen at sixteen years. So, that's just basically the general math that I did. And then it's, you know, it's close enough to fifteen with the water rate up, uh, ceiling. By the way, it's about six thousand units if it's two-point-five.
I just did the ten years, so it's about twelve.
For the, for the, um, two eighteen process, how many households did we think we had, like thirty-two hundred?
Yeah.
So, we currently have around thirty-two hundred-ish, well, water, water users, I should say. So, that some of those are commercial, so we'll have to get them more accurate. Um, but again, we'll, we'll do some math for you in terms of like how many square feet lot, lots we would need for scenario three. Um, but again, it doesn't have to be fifteen. If you want to shoot for something lower, that's completely within your purview. It was really just operating off of, well, if you're shooting for about ten thousand in an eight-year timeframe, you're going to be at about thirteen at a twenty-ish year frame timeframe, you have a cap of fifteen on your water rights.
And the other thing is, um, it depends on the housing types, doesn't it? I presume we're not going for the three-bedroom, two-bath scenario generally.
What we've, uh, put into the housing element and what we've heard from the public input is people want a variety of housing types. Um, but again, you are a younger city in comparison to the rest of the county, in comparison to a lot of other rural counties. And so I think you'll continue to be more family-oriented than some of the other communities in Siskiyou County. Um, because again, you have a little bit more infrastructure to support that socially as well as community-wise. Um, and that's been something that people have said during the public input pieces is they want to continue to be family-oriented. So, if we're going to be appealing to people who want to have families, you'd probably see a three, three-bedroom, two more often than not. Um, but that's not to say, we do see a national trend and a California trend, um, not quite hit us yet, but the intergenerational housing. So, we're seeing a lot more people move in with their parents. We're seeing a lot more people have extended family members providing daycare within their home. And so the two-point-five, you know, splitting the difference, because you're also seeing, uh, yo- younger generations not necessarily have children. Um, and so you kind of have a lot of different pieces you have to balance there in terms of the total number of households. I think two-point-five is reasonable to assume for the city of Wyreka with all of those different factors.
And we're not all retired, though.
No.
Right.
No.
Um, I see you're referring to a ten thousand square foot lot. Um, what is the average size of the lots in within the city limits currently?
I have to find that for you. They do.
Yeah, seven, seven to eight thousand.
Oh, wow.
Third acre, half acre.
Yeah, mine's a third of an acre.
I thought I did the math right, four, six, one, two, five, right?
Forty, forty-three, five, six.
Four, three, five, six. So, that's point two-three acre.
Okay, so it's a little spot and a quarter of an acre.
It's not.
Too small. I just wanted to relate to it.
What we see.
Again, I was just taking, it it's pretty common in in the planning field for that style of development to be about a ten thousand. And again, those are just assumptions that I'm making based off of that. I can find the exact average, uh, size of the lots that you would like. But again, it's, it's more of replicating that single-family neighborhood. That is something some people have, you know, valued. And again, these are just isolated scenarios. You can combine all of them, and in reality, none of these scenarios are going to happen perfectly like that. You're going to see equal investment in some of these scenarios. But for the purposes of this exercise, I I'm trying to understand your preferences. What do you want to focus on? What is important to you? And as we move forward with what's important to you, you know, understanding what the pros and cons of that are, and the same thing for the city council. So, um, again, I would most likely figure you would pick a combination of of those scenarios of what you would like to do. So, but again, being more transparent about what those pros and cons are. You know, again, you understand if we do prioritize this, this is what may happen. These are the probable negatives and positives. And if you're like, yep, we're fine with that, I'm good. That's all I'm here to do.
Like a scenario two, three.
Yeah.
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 That's something that.
That's kind of good.
And then basically, what we'll do is we'll morph those as we move through the land use element and just try to make sure that the areas we're focusing on is what you want to focus on and and make sure that that's done how you'd like to see it.
So, I have another question. So, when you're, when you're talking about fifteen thousand population, and I I see the whole county stats were about forty-three thousand people in the county, something roughly.
Yeah.
And Wyreka over the last twenty years really hasn't, hasn't grown. If, what would, I guess, how would you, you're talking about, well, we could make that happen. Make it happen fifteen thousand. But if we don't have the economy to make that happen, or, you know, how does that, how do you see, like, what do you see different plan for fifteen thousand people than you do for ten thousand? Like, you've sitting in your jet.
It's just basically how hard you want to push on development. I mean, that's really what we're gauging here is, again, my job is to make sure you have a good community and that you get the goals and, you know, you get your desired outcomes that you want to plan for. And so that's why I said, if if you want to plan for growth, we will plan for that. And it does take balancing all of it. That's why the general plan has so many different elements is that. So, once we decide on something and we want to move forward, that'll be integrated into each one of those, those pieces, and that includes transportation. So, again, if we want to get to fifteen thousand, and that is the lens that you've requested me to. So again, if we want to get to fifteen thousand, and that is the lens that you've requested me to have when I look at problems, you know, we're looking at transit options, we're looking at what is that going to do to parking availability? What is that going to do to development patterns, food systems, economics, you know? And then we also have to respond and pivot to what's actually happening in the national market that we can't necessarily, you know, control. That's basically what I get hired to do is, you know, if there is a portion though where we get to a point, you know, the recession, for example, was very unique for us in the planning profession. And I'm hoping we're a little bit smarter on that one now. But, you know, that was a big change for planners because at that time, we were prioritizing larger-scale households. I mean, that was the trend is build the McMansion. You know, it's pretty easy to get that mortgage. And so now we're being, you know, asked to change our mindset and kind of figure out what to do with these McMansions that don't have anyone in them, and they're converting them to apartment buildings is one of the options. Or having it as multi-generational household is one of them too. So instead, so basically what we're doing is defining what you want to do. And then as we put together the general plan is how, is basically, I'm going to tell you, these are the best practices. These are what have worked. This is what could work of how to get there. And so that's kind of where we're at right now. I'm going to basically go into thousands and thousands of pages of how you get there based off of programs in the housing element, programs in conservation, transportation and things like that. So, but again, if we don't want to do fifteen, we don't have to do fifteen.
But I just want to chime in to Mr. Devlin because it is, it's not, we don't just write it down and it, it becomes, it becomes so. Because it, but what we do is in a perfect world, because some people do these general plans, and they never look at them again, right? And I would imagine that this city has done that in the past. We would like to use this plan over the next twenty years. And then every question that we have, we would answer it with what this general plan stipulated. So when we transition into economic redevelopment, well, we know in order to have a population of this size that's family-friendly oriented, we need to have good jobs that are not just specified, specified to tourism per se, is we need to find industry. And we would be seeking that industry with this plan. And so we would.
This plan is just a roadmap to get you there.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean it's going to happen. It just means that it's your intent. And then we would go, we would go try to orchestrate making that happen. You could do the opposite where we would orchestrate retreat, you know, ultimately. So just because we all may want it to happen, if that's where we land, it doesn't mean it will happen ultimately. So we, we completely understand that, but we would make decisions based off the intent of the planning commission and the council to get to ten thousand in a certain amount of, in a certain time period. We would start planning public works, infrastructure, where did we need to make improvements based off of where you guys decided you needed zoning? We would then go to the state revolving fund and we would basically try to prop up making infrastructure improvements to really incentivize development on some levels. So.
Yeah, one of the things we're running into that is incredibly difficult right now is we did this housing element. It actually spurred housing interest. We do have legitimate housing developers that we are currently working on for master developments. But we have them, we have too many of them, which is a thing. And so we have people interested in the north part of the city, we have people interested in the south part of the city, we have people interested in the infill. So how do I use my theoretically forty hours a week that, I do think about this a lot more than that. But, you know, one of the issues we're running into is the north side doesn't necessarily have all of the infrastructure we need to support that development. We don't necessarily even have the best infrastructure in the south side of the city to support that. And unless we hire more people, which is costly to everybody, that raises all of our fees, that raises, you know, we'll have to raise taxes for that, if that's what you want. But it's not necessarily a good use of our resources for me to focus on three different major developments in three different areas when the other thing too is I don't even know if that's what you want. I think that's what we've talked about before about, you know, one of the things we'll move into after this is a redevelopment strategy, which is looking at some of the infill and the commercial buildings and filling those pieces because that's a very low value-added piece for the city. And so it's like, what we talk about is like, well, for economic development as a whole, how do you want to balance new versus redevelopment? Do you want to focus on attracting new businesses or do you want to build up your current businesses? Where do you want on that spectrum? Do you want to spend thirty percent of your time here, seventy percent of your time here? The idea is to have the general plan answer that so that when we get into an internal meeting of staff, we go, this is what we're supposed to be doing. This is what the intent is. These are the marching orders that we've been given and we now execute them. If at any point something happens, you know, we are on a fault line, it's not an active fault line, but it exists. Say the fault line opens up and like, what are we going to do then? We look back to this and we go, this is what we've prioritized. This is how we're going to respond. And it adds, it, it ends up making me more efficient in my job as opposed to coming to you every single month and going, what do you want me to do? This will at least give me some idea of this is generally what you want to do, and then I'll be able to bring you more finished product, right? You know, a lot of the stuff I brought you guys has been a little bit more broad because you haven't really explored it. And I'm not going to make this decision for you because that's not my job. Unless you want it to be my job. I can make every single decision in my office without asking anyone's opinion, but I don't think that's necessarily good planning. So this gives us more clear direction. And again, going back to, you know, some of the pieces you've brought up in the past is there is no incentive or goal for me to be flexible in zoning right now because the general plan currently is very prohibitive. I mean, our general plan and zoning code is very prohibitive. And so that's what I go off of is it wants me to be prohibitive because that's what you've prioritized. And so that's what we're trying to do. Yep.
Thank you.
Four and five matter to me because without industry, you can't really have growth. You have to have the jobs for people to come here to work.
So you, so you, so you like prioritize the, the nodes in the corridor as well?
Yeah.
And again, having these conversations brings up other pieces that I'm able to take and then bring back to any more finished product. And again, the closer I get to the, the bullseye, I mean, that's what we would like to get to. And then that way I don't have to have two-hour meetings with you. We have one hour meeting. I go, this is what was said. Here's how we applied it. You give me an okay, and then we go. But going back to the population, do you want to lower it?
Yeah, that's twenty years. It might take twenty-five to get to that point. But I would say, keep the aim, work towards it.
I mean, there's no downfall if you don't make it. I mean, it's not like your housing units, which they told you only need three, so we'll make three. But, all right. You can just sit in one of the chairs closer.
Yeah.
Are you trying to get your steps in?
That's right. That's right. I, I know it's controversial, right? Because I think that if you were here last night, you saw a slideshow about the fire department and volunteers, and you did see the population curve increase over time period from nineteen ninety until now. I think there were less than five thousand people within that presentation last night and at some point in the early nineties. And now there's seventy-eight hundred. And I understand it is just crazy to think that this place has the potential to grow in any way whatsoever based off of having, you know, my wife grew up here and went to high school here and things have changed. And the industry left as far as the mills are concerned. But what I am telling you is, is that if you don't plan for fifteen thousand, this is what someone else will, I guess. Someone else will come in here and they will drive us to fifteen thousand whether we like it or not because they will have the economy and the development money to come up here and do it without really anybody stopping them from doing it. So I say that you should plan for fifteen thousand because then you are actually controlling the growth. And more than likely, you are correct, we probably will not get there. But you are setting up the structure to not allow someone to come in here and start dictating terms and basically attempting to control the process, in my opinion. So I would advocate, plan for fifteen, more than likely, we're going to land on ten, you know? But just in case all of a sudden things do get difficult south of us, which I think we're all recognizing if we have relative south of us, you can sell a twelve-hundred-square-foot home, you know, out in Riverside or San Bernardino for a million dollars and move up here. And we're going to see more and more and more of that. And people are getting priced out south of us. There is a push to the Pacific Northwest because of water issues, because of climate issues and because of cost of living issues and because of density. I think just being out during COVID away from people, there is an interest in the Pacific Northwest that we're in. And so I just advocate, I would plan for fifteen just so that we can control the process and not have somebody else control it for us.
Yeah, I think just last thing I'll say on that note is if you do want a really good illustration of not planning for growth effectively, the city of Mount Chasta has approximately thirty-two hundred people within its city limits. If you look at the surrounding county area just outside the city limits, there's about thirty-six hundred. And so again, that's a situation where a city, I'm trying not to be mean to them because I did work for them. I think it's an example of a city that had unrealistic expectations, saying, we're not going to grow. Well, the surrounding county land did. There are other pressures that wanted you to grow and you didn't really accept that. And so you have the Siskiyou Highlands, you have a number of these areas over on Old Stage, you know, that had the resources and the ability to do that, and they did it themselves. And now you're having development pressure on the city of Mount Chasta for these people now to join your city because their septic are failing, their wells are failing, you know? And so now you're having to absorb these developments that were not developed in a way that you controlled. So again, South Wydricka is a very good example of that too. There's quite a few people who live in South Wydricka who will most likely need to be annexed into the city within the next twenty years because of their water issues eventually. And so again, you did not get to control that development. And we had an example of that of a project that had a planned unit development that did not follow our standard. And there were issues with that. And we have to then go and pick up the pieces afterwards, which is much harder to do than doing it correct the first time. All right.
I understand now.
Sorry, sorry if I'm a little convoluted. I've been staring at this for a long time. But if you have no other input or direction, we'll go ahead and put the matrix together and get this to you in a document for the next meeting. If you have any questions or concerns in the interim, I'm happy to meet with everyone, have conversations about this, if that's all right with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
This was a lot of work.
Are you paid to do this?
Ten future planning items, future agenda, agenda items, action items and presentations to the planning commission that may occur within the next ninety days. All dates tentative and subject to change if needed.
We'll have this item coming back to you. And then we do have a conditional use permit public hearing for your next meeting, just to be aware of. That information out, we have public notices going out here pretty soon. And that should be it. I don't know if we have any other. Yeah, we'll bring this stuff back. Oh, and you'll also have your annual progress report, which is a state mandated report that we have to send to you and the state. It just basically tells you how many houses we built this year. We usually try to do an over encompassing planning and building report for you as well. So you'll know how many private projects we have, which is basically informational. So I'll be coming to you.
I'm working on a film ordinance and we'll bring that to you in March, right? That's planning commission, so.
Thank you. So adjournment, next meeting, February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four at six P M.